I'd like to call the Mashpee Public Schools' business meeting agenda of July 20th, 2022 to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledgeable Agents.
Pledgeable agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I also would like to say that the Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Lompana people who have lived and been sustained on this territory for more than 10,000 years. So ratify the agenda. Given that there is a loss of air conditioning at the moment, is there anything that we want to perhaps postpone? Anything that we might want to push? Or is this all NSBA? Must you?
Should we push the family survey so that we have the full committee here to look at those and discuss that?
Well, I feel bad because they really prep for that.
Yeah.
That's happening tonight. But do we need to talk about the conference?
No.
Okay. So maybe hold the NSBA conference.
That was just an FYI anyway.
That's something that Kathy added.
Oh, yeah, I think.
You know, we could do that as a retreat. If you want.
Either way.
Okay. Would you like to keep that on?
No, if that will help expedite things, that's fine.
Let's, I'll tell you what, let's just amend those to sort of put them at the tail end. And if we're good on time and we're not dying, we'll tackle them and if we are, we'll push. I don't see anything else. I'm sure Ashley's going to be quick.
Yes, but we can also push it to the retreat. I'll have better information then.
Okay. All right. So let's, yeah.
We can do all three.
Okay. So let's, so I'm recommending that we tabled, or not tabled, but push the Director of Finance report to the retreat. Because that'll save us some time. And maybe Patty, if you want to, if there is an update on the stadium project, we should probably do that tonight. But yeah, okay. And then they hold off on the NSBA and MASCE stuff until they end. And hopefully we can trim a little bit. But otherwise, we're going to blaze through this in the afternoon.
We are.
So I'll make a motion to ratify the agenda by the NSBA mask and the Director of Finance portion, which will push the end or to the retreat.
Thank you. For a second?
A second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Is there any public comments? There's none at this time. And if I'm hot, I know focus. All right. Out-of-state field trips. Let's go.
So you do have a memo in your packet on the back of the agenda. And we do have Principal Manette here. We also have Lynn Gorgoni. Did I say that right?
Yes.
She is one of the class advisors actually for grade 10.
10.
10. And I see we have some students to include their voice in this. So what you see in the memo is we are requesting approval of three out-of-state field trips for the 2223 school year, these particular three. They are all trips to Washington DC. We feel very strongly that it's an important experience for Mashpee students to have. And this will help sort of include the traditional eighth grade one, as well as two years where students did not get to participate. And what you see in the packet is a October trip, October 2nd, which is a Sunday, returning on October 5th, a Wednesday evening, Washington DC for grade 10. And then the two traditional, more traditional times that we've gone is in June. So you see grade eight trip would be June 4th, which is the Sunday after graduation. They come back on June 7th. And then the following Sunday, June 11th, is when our ninth graders would go, returning on the 14th. So they're all through the exact same trips. And so we're here to answer any questions that you might have. You do not have a form in here on the field trip itself, but we can do that form after. But this is detailed for the.
My only question, if I can, was on the 10th grade trip. Is that going to be enough time for them to get the funds? Because usually that's spread out over payments, is it not?
So the, and I think we put in here, so the 999, so I think Mrs. Gorgoni, Ms. Gorgoni could come up and share about her very enthusiastic and creative group of students who have many, many plans for this summer.
So they do have some funds that they earned last year. They had a, hosted a spring fling dance for parents and little ones. And then we've been working on a whole bunch of ideas for this summer. These are our 10th grade class officers, some of them. And they are wanting to do car washes. There is one student that's trying to design a sticker that could be sold, like at her store where she works. What are some of our other ideas?
They were going to work aid.
Oh, yes.
Stuff like that.
Yeah, having restaurant nights and those kinds of things. We've started researching.
And there is some funds in the student activity accounts at the Mashpee Middle High School that can be put towards this trip as well. What was the other thing I was going to say about that?
Is that typical?
Yes, I think that, I mean, going on Ms. Vanitski, there have been funds in the past that go towards the trip. The students don't earn all of that. We will make sure that, you know, families in need get some support. And it is a tight turnaround. We're hoping most of the 10th grade is going to hop on the plan. If it's approved tonight, we're going to do a Zoom meeting on Monday, next Monday evening with the families of the 10th graders to inform them of sort of the details. And I don't know if Dr. Manette can talk about the company. So we're going through a tour company for all three of these. It's the same company. Do they offer any kind of online, like share with families and fundraising that way?
So she has sent me numerous emails. She's ready to go. She's super excited. She's actually going to be on pending approval.
The Zoom?
On Monday night.
Okay.
Anticipating that it's going to be a quick turnaround. So, yes.
And this is also a company that Dr. Manette has worked with frequently in her former position.
Can I introduce yourself? Do you mind? I don't think I know all of that.
Hi, I'm Aisha Shaffee.
Are you the president?
Yeah, I'm president.
Okay.
I'm Addison Wood.
I'm Kathy Luttrell.
I'm Adrian.
And are you officers too?
Here's the cabinet members.
Oh, cabinet members. Lovely.
Man, you have gotten big. I didn't even know that. You've come a long way since you were that little fish in the.
That was Katrina.
That was Katrina.
Oh.
Yeah.
That was a crab.
That's what I was thinking.
That was a friend.
Yes.
That was just a crab.
You were just, you were just like a little thing.
Tiny crab.
Wow. Tiny crab.
You've gotten big. You're all of them. So I happen to know that the 10th grade trip to DC got canceled because of COVID. You were the first casualty, right? So that's the reason that we're trying to shoehorn this in, I assume. But isn't the DC trip usually done over a weekend?
No, they always leave on a Sunday.
Oh, okay. All right. So that's typical.
That, you know, we'll have, particularly in the June trips, we have extra coverage because of teachers who have senior classes available. So we'll have to figure out the October trip. But it's staff-wise, you know, they're basically kind of working, except for evenings, we take care of that piece. I'm not sure. You have to give a, you know.
And you ready to come back and tell us about the trip after you go?
Yes. It won't be because of hot.
Yeah.
Do you have any more questions?
Not that I can think of them, like, you know, we definitely want to make sure they get the opportunity. That's my opinion on the whole thing.
And I don't think, wasn't, isn't it the current 11th that didn't get to go to DC? They're the ones going to Disney?
Yeah.
Oh, they were the first casualties.
Because of March 20, they didn't get to go. So we're making up the two missed classes and then the ones that would have gotten it this year.
Sam was in seventh, so these guys were in seventh that year. Okay. Gotcha. It's normally the eighth grade trip.
Yes.
And we'll go back to you.
I mean, like, because they've been learning all the way up, you know, about the history and about, like, you know, the country and about, like, you know, everything that's going on there. And then they finally get to go in eighth grade. And yeah, it'd be nice if these guys get the opportunity.
Oh, well, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the three Washington DC trips for the 10th, 9th, and 8th grade students as presented.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? All right, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes.
I vote yes as well. Have fun.
Yeah.
Good luck with fundraising.
Yes.
Lots of stuff we can help.
Thanks. Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. So Dr. Manette, tell her to go, the girl.
What?
Tell the company to go.
And we're going to test her. I didn't want to look too obvious.
Okay. Next order of business is approving the minutes from June 15.
Did you get a chance to take a beat?
I did not go back and watch to see who seconded, but I feel like I was the one who seconded it, I think, because it was the baseball. And I remember I had asked a question, and I feel like I was the one who seconded that motion. But admittedly, I did not go back and re-watch.
Okay. So we'll put that in as an edit. Any other edits or changes?
That was the only thing I saw.
Okay.
All right. So then, issue that?
Either way, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the edit to number seven as presented.
Seconded by?
Oh, second, a second motion.
Okay. And any further discussion? All right, Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Right. Your business.
So on your, in your packet, page six and seven, you have the agenda calendar, where we try to make sure we lay out the year. So I don't know if you had a chance to look at that ahead of time, but if you have any other thoughts, as you do look, this is sort of a living document. It's, it can change as we flow through, which it usually does. But it helps us to try to not forget things and have consistency.
Yep. And then I think we had talked about, like, but we've decided that the strategic plan, those updates are happening monthly. So we didn't, that's every meeting, right?
Mm-hmm. We're trying to tie them in.
Yeah.
Okay. Then Family Opinion Survey. Is that's next, right? Oh, no, merging. Sorry. So you also have a memo on page eight, which is, I have it as a vote to approve merging the Mashpee Middle High School with, I mean, the Mashpee Middle School with the Mashpee High School in terms of DESI. Obviously, we already talk Mashpee Middle High School in most of our day-to-day world, but the letterhead is that way. But it's just cumbersome. One of the biggest pluses of the merge is the whole Power School becomes one unified. You don't have to look for teacher in the middle school versus the high school. It's just much easier. So on the memo, it talks about sort of the history of where we've gotten our seventh graders and eighth graders have always learned in the same, in that school building. It would allow for singular reporting to DESI. Power School, like I said, is much easier and user-friendly. Teacher assignments and scheduling will be much more streamlined and easier. And so much of our, so many of our seventh and eighth graders are already participating in high school level clubs, music, and team events. And then, and we've always only had one principal who oversaw both schools. And then what needs to be done is, and I have them, but they only require my signature, but a form that gets submitted to DESI where you basically are not dissolving, closing the Mashpee Middle School, a form that merges and sort of gives that little thread. And then the front campus sign would need to be adjusted to read Mashpee Middle High School. And then on the building itself, on the current middle school side, it says Mashpee Middle School. We would just need to add middle hyphen, we have to have the hyphen hi, so shifting. And then at the main entrance, it just says Mashpee High School. That would have to be adjusted. Those words on the overhang where the Falcon is would have to be. We did make sure, like, through Sean Maroney, through Lindsay Kett, through Matt Traveri, through Mike Looney, all the different people who work in, from different angles, support this and felt that it was a good idea. And not, but Sandwich High School just recently did this in the last three to four months. They dissolved their STEM Academy and they are the Sandwich Middle High School or Junior, Senior High School, something like that. So I think we do have this as a vote so that we can acknowledge that school committee is aware and approved.
So I had one question. I know that if you look at, if I go on the DESI website now and look at reporting, is the reporting consolidated for our middle high school already? Or so it would then be lumped together?
It is consolidated.
Aggregated by model.
Right. Right. But it is, like, you can go on as a district-wide, look at our site, and it is merged. But when you hit the schools, you have your choice of Mashpee High School and Mashpee Middle School. So that piece is separate.
And so does that work? Is there any implication in terms of DESI formulas and, you know, we wouldn't be shooting ourselves in the foot for losing anything or any formulas?
No. Like, with a budget, it'll be all one budget now. I don't have to separate those from teachers that are just middle school versus Mashpee Middle High School and also save the supplies. If you buy supplies as one, normally, then I have to go back and, like, remove them out. This way, everything is on one line. It's clearer for me, to be honest. And then we, when we do things with the Pledgeable expenditure, so it's tied to a relevant, which would be consistent or just be for all of us.
One, the other thing I thought you might need to change is the deponess.
They're saying Mashpee Middle High School.
They do? Oh. Well, I'm so, it's so confused. When I saw this, I was like, I was trying to think of where we sit, because I've always said Mashpee Middle High School.
Me too.
But I, and I think that's where I got it from, is from you. So I was like, well, what does it say it? So historically, it was for NCAS reporting that it seemed like the middle school was sort of going to make us look worse or whatever.
Circle level.
Scoring. None of that is actually relevant anymore. And I think that was the impetus behind all of it.
I see.
Okay. Okay. Kathy?
Well, she answered my question, because my question was about Sandwich, what they were doing. Because I was like, I thought they were all just high school. And I was going to ask, is it necessary to even have middle high school and just not be like all high school and just, like, do we need both in the name? But you kind of answered that.
I like having middle high school there because it definitely acknowledges, you know, seventh and eighth grade is more of a unique stage in your learning and your life.
Yep.
Yes.
That was my only question.
Oh, it's unique, all right.
Yes.
Yes.
Like PTSD coming out of it. Okay. So, yeah, Matt, do you have any more?
No, I was just, I wanted to make sure there was nothing that changes, like, funding-wise, because you changed the name or anything like, I mean, obviously, like, there's the small changes we make that, like, will pass something. But like, you know, there's nothing that, like, we get specific funding because of, you know, it being a separate entity or anything like that. So that's all.
So it sounds like it'll be more efficient from that standpoint for Ashley, which is great.
Does it impact your end-of-the-year reporting?
Yeah. Hold that lamp.
Okay. I'll take a motion. I think she wanted to vote.
Yeah. Make sure she defines what they want. So I'll make a motion to merge Mashpee Middle High School with Mashpee High School. Yeah.
Creating.
Finish that sentence.
Create, oh, yeah. Creating Mashpee Middle High School.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay.
You don't want to be my slide.
I could.
Thank you. Just go to the bottom when we get there, like the, over in that box. Just touch the screen at the bottom.
Yes, I would be happy. Dr. Manette got a new job just about 30 seconds ago. You're the principal of Mashpee Middle High School.
So there's no dash, there's no hyphen.
No, there is a dash.
There's a dash.
Dash, not slanted line. I dislike a slanted line.
No.
No slanted line.
Really doesn't want a slanted line.
You get to use a seven dash.
So it's Mashpee Middle Dash.
Yes.
So congrats, Dr. Manette.
My lucky next to my. Being at their school.
It's a lollydew. Okay. So, you know, if we need, if we wanted to, like, you know, kind of modernize those letters and just replace all of them and maybe do a little painting, that would be good.
Modernize the letters. Oh, yes.
I'm just looking at the.
Oh, yes. Well, there's a particular stain that bothers me as well, coming down those.
Maybe take care of that at the same time.
I don't enjoy that. Okay. So we have some slides here to give you a little update on the 2022 Family Opinion Survey, which also included a Student Opinion Survey this year. Look, I hope she's got her ability to do it from here. Good job.
Ms. O'Brien.
Okay. So you see that those are the years we've done a Family Opinion Survey, and that really is a school committee initiative. And then adding this year of, the first year of our students, so a lot of baseline data from them. Advance.
Okay, Ms. O.
Oh, jeez. Okay, that's just sort of a little historical piece about when we do the survey, sort of what the process is, the steps we take before the survey. We've tried to be consistent in each year in terms of developing questions, reviewing questions, focus groups. You can see the different, not venues, tools we used in the past. So last year and this year, we both, both years used the Google Form. Both years, we did collect identifier information. And little extra info about last year where we had some, you know, hybrid, fully in school. And then this year, similar process. We did have a focus group. We did not mail any paper surveys home. Families did provide identifier information. I do not share any of that with administrators, only results of the questions. And if there's any narrative text, we share that without any identifiers in it. And then this was the first year we also surveyed students five through 12. So the first slide just basically shows the participation rate. And you can see that this year it did go down. I'm not sure really why. What I would, and I think I put it in there, but what I would like to be able to do is just sort of spot check with some of those who chose not to participate and find out if there's a, something that turned them off of it, or is it, you know, maybe it's the time of year, maybe it's the format, too many questions, whatever it is, I want to just sort of figure out a little bit of information behind the decrease, because we really don't want it to be declining, we want it to be increasing. Go ahead. There's a lot of very small numbers on here. You have in your, in the handout, yes, you have the bigger version of the, what's there? And this one shows the participation. And, wait a minute, did I miss? No. So you can see in 2022, we have the number of families by school, that's up there in the purple, and we have the number of families who responded, and we have a return rate. Then we also did it by identifying the number of students. And then the specific, you know, because they named the student, and then you end up with those response rates. And we did total the student ones. We did not give a total under the family part because we did not know in the 983, we're not pulling out the data for families who have children in multiple schools that responded or participated. You also, go ahead.
So the, the delta between the total number of families in our district and the total of this 983 is the number of families with kids in multiple schools.
Yes. So if you were adding up the four lines by school, it's not going to add to the 983.
Right.
It's greater.
Yes.
That's the difference.
But how many are there?
I don't know, which, you know, we could, I mean, there are people that probably could dive further into it. I don't know why, what's that going to necessarily do for action steps we need to take. We do want to find out, and we do know who responded. So we could look for, we can look for deficits in certain subgroups that aren't responding, whether it's ELs or Native Americans or other students of color. But.
So what Susie helped us do the first couple of years, and one of the reasons we did it this way is because it's, when you talk about non-respondence or respondents, like, if you end up losing people who have multiple kids in the schools, it's going to affect your response rate more than if, you know, so, and you also don't, it's interesting to know whether the families with kids in more schools, you know, we had, there's not a big number, but there are dozens of families that have a kid in each school, or there have been historically. So it's kind of useful, I think, to look at that, not in order to total all your families, but just to see whether people with one kid are more responsive, or whether kids, whether a family with multiple kids is maybe more inclined to respond or, you know, so that's, that's why Susie looked at it that way the first time. But it just might help you when you're trying to suss out kind of where we declined and why that might be.
Okay. Okay. And then there's 2021 data's there. So you can see in terms of the response rate by school based on students, the Coombe School was the strong horse in that race. And the Mashpee High School, we need to improve that piece. But Quash and the middle school had the same participation rate. Okay. I put the wrong thing to go by here. Okay. So the next one, this one just shows comparing 21 and 22, the responders by grade level. This is the parent survey, the parent guardian survey. So you can see that in 2021, more parents of fifth graders responded. And in 2022, it was seventh grade. But that also might correspond with the grade levels that have the highest enrollments too. Yeah. So down below, at least for this year, you can see grade level numbers in terms of the students that were surveyed. So the next slide is the Student Opinion Survey, which is year one. And you can see each of the grade levels, the percentage of students who participated and based on the number that's down below. This is interesting because we did do this as an in-school activity. I believe at the middle high school, it was a period eight activity, so somewhat of a captive audience. So you would expect, I would have expected, much higher participation. I was not up there to be engaged in that, and it was optional. We're not going to force anybody to participate. And maybe seniors figured they were on their way out and.
They leave during.
Oh, they leave during, or left during period eight. That could be true. So that, you know, this is the start of our collecting of data on our, from our students. The next slide really focuses on, there's two legacy questions. The first one in blue is, I think the Mashpee Public Schools has a positive public image, and that the blue line represents parent guardian responses in each of the years. So we are 93% for this year where they believe we have a public, positive public image. Then the red line shows the responses to the question. I understand the role of the Mashpee School Committee, and that this year is at a 79 from our parents and guardians. And then the first year of collecting that information from our students, they're, and maybe, I'm not sure if they fully understood this question, but the focus groups did, but the public image, the Mashpee Public Schools has a public image. 62% of the fifth through 12th graders who responded to the survey agreed with that. And then, understanding the role of the Mashpee School Committee, 55% of the responding students understand the role. So those, particularly on the student survey for me, is a good starting point to do some work on that. The next slide shows the data in response to the question. The Mashpee Public Schools promotes a climate where diversity is honored, equity is provided, and inclusion is ensured. We did have this question last year. I'm not sure it was exactly worded like this, but it had similar words. So you can see that the first three columns represent the parent guardians. And you can see the green is 2021 and the yellow is 2022. So those, I think, are pretty, you know, strong response, strong results. But then you have the students who live here in our world, and question students, only 62% agreed with that, and 64% of our seventh through 12th graders. And there were definitions included on the survey to help students understand what those terms meant. But that's also a good baseline data. The next one shows the data collected on, in response to the prompt. I see Mashpee's portrait of a graduate reflected in school assignments. And so yes is blue and don't know is red. So our parents and guardians feel that they, they see that the portrait of a graduate was reflected in school assignments. But interestingly enough, the students are not as aligned to that data. So 56% of Quashnet students in grades five and six see that the portrait of a graduate is reflected in their work. And then seven through 12, it's 56. And so that's definitely lends itself to some pretty good action steps. And reminder, so these are tied to our Plan for Success. This is year two. I just want to say we did meet today with a group of, well, it's supposed to have been 30, but around 27 leaders at all levels of the school, including our new elementary grade level instructional leaders, and came up with some really good action steps that will improve that. And also, we drafted a professional practice goal and a student learning goal for next year as a district team, and they're reviewing it, and it was tied to actions that will make, improve that in terms of making the portrait of a graduate very alive and well and visible in learning. The next one is, my child feels safe at his or her school. That's the prompt. And the students prompt was obviously, I feel safe at my school. And so you can see 2018, 2021, and 2022 data from our parents. This is the first three columns. And, you know, it's continued to increase at Coombs and stayed the same from 21 to 22 at Quashnet, and went up slightly at Mashpee Middle High School from the parents' perspective, which is awesome. And then the fifth and sixth graders had 73% felt that they feel safe at their school, and 64% of the seventh through 12th graders. So again, that's one that we can look at, but it's a baseline for students. But it, it is nice that, from the parents' perspective, I think that they feel that their children are safe here. And I think kids could be looking at multiple measures when they think of their safety. Parents tend to think of sort of one thing. Any questions on that one? And then the very last slide is just sort of a little bit of overview. So we really like having the Student Opinion Survey, and we're going to be establishing various student groups in school year 22, 23 to provide increased opportunities for student voice problem solving around the responses that we received and helping us to make some decisions. We're working as district leaders, school leaders, to determine the why behind some of the data. And obviously, we did a lot of that work today. And students are going to be included in the process, and part of what, they'll be looking at this as well as some other topics. Like today, we also did some work with handbooks, and we want to make sure we've gone back to students with some of their, to get some of their input. The participation rate, we already talked about, has dropped, and we, we want to continue to see that increase. So we need to sort of really dive into that, responders and nonresponders, to see what thoughts they had, you know, why they chose not to participate, and whatever barriers are might be in place for them. We did observe that quite a few prompts had a significant number of respondents who picked the neutral, which it is what it is, and wondering why some of that is as well, both from students and parent guardians. So we could randomly touch base with some of those responders to wonder. And sometimes you just don't know which way, or there may be an option that didn't fit. And then, again, we're going to explore, and most of what we did, not most of what we did, but the section that we worked on today with the larger group was really looking at student responses. Because I feel like everyone's voice does matter, but they are the ones living the experience, and I want to make sure we take some steps to improve it.
Thank you. Could you go back a couple of slides to the yes/no chart? Yeah, this, this, well, it was the previous one on the positive public image. Maybe was that a yes/no?
No, yeah, that was, do you? No, that's, that's not.
Okay, so it must be this one, the first thing on it, or?
Yeah.
Portrait of a graduate.
Yeah.
Well, I just was confused because I saw a chart with yes/no at the top, but were these, was that a Likert scale question or a yes/no question? Yeah, it was the portrait of the graduate. I just, I wrote it on there. I mean, those were the actual answers?
Let me just look for.
Because it looks like we asked strongly agree or, I mean, what did you say?
Then we had a few that were yes/no.
So the question was, Mashpee's portrait of a graduate is shown below. After reviewing the portrait, please respond to this prompt. I see Mashpee's portrait of a graduate reflected in my school assignments. You could do yes, no, or I don't know.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know was.
I think, I think this sheet is, is just kind of, it should have a highlight that says prompts with a yes/no response. That question just doesn't have that on.
Oh, oh. The key?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I was confused.
Okay.
I can't remember. I sent in a bunch, a bunch of questions.
Oh, I can pull up your name.
Did they get addressed?
I got them addressed. I can't remember because I'm not looking at them.
The first one, you already talked about the, where the.
All the families elected for the focus group.
Oh, yeah. So we did, we asked principals to submit names. We tried to do a cross-section of individuals. It's not a popular activity that, it's, it's hard, or at least it was this year, I felt like, to get people. So were you a part of that?
I was.
Yeah.
We had more than we had the year before, so.
Well, I mean, I just think it's, you know, initially, we talked about incentives and, and why we didn't want to do incentives. But we also, you know, we have roughly two-thirds of the families that aren't participating. So, you know, randomly selecting some families instead of maybe going with people we know might give us a little more insight into, you know, what we don't know. And, and you sort of, if you're randomly selecting them, then you really don't.
Yeah.
And it sort of puts the burden on us to sort of explain what we're doing, maybe to somebody who isn't as interested. You know, or you could simply take the focus group next year from all the nonresponders. Don't let the responders.
Because we did pick different individuals for this year's focus group, and we, there was some randomness at a sense, but some people didn't come, said they were coming.
We looked at it from like a demographic perspective.
Yeah, we tried to get.
Yeah, people with kids.
Yes, so that was one of your questions.
Which brings its own goodness to it, but not, I think the nonresponders would be a great tool to figure out.
So you had written disconnect between student and parent impression of a positive public image is interesting. This could suggest.
You have comments, I think.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read those comments? Well, I would just say to, to the committee, just for your benefit, because I just sent those to them, was, you know, we, when we first started this survey, you know, we started it aligned with our goals. And one of them was to help people understand better what the school committee does. We were out at the picnics, and we were, you know, in front of people a lot, and did a really targeted sort of campaign. So I think, then COVID. And so it's like, yeah, we haven't really been doing that for the last couple of years. And all they know is that we like, you know, got rid of the masks, or, you know, like, that's, that's when we had our big, biggest attendance of the year. So, so I do, so that didn't bother me, but it explains that if we want that to be going on, we do need to be out in the community and sort of connecting with people. And then what I think is just interesting is that the lived experience of the students versus the experience of families. And the fact that little tiny text that was at the bottom of the opinion one, yeah, the very bottom there, which is basically that half of the, so while it's 60, I think, you know, 62% think that the school has a positive public image, it was 70% for grades five and six, and less than 50 for the older kids. So they're sort of, they're more out in the public, like, their school is, as they get older, you know, they sort of have, they see their school against other schools. But when you're younger, I think you just are in your school. And then, of course, I'm not a psychologist, I'm just guessing. And then the other one is the reverse. And so it's like, the older grades might be more involved in our meetings or have, you know, like the robotics and some of these students that might be actually coming to our meetings, whereas maybe the younger kids don't. So it's, it's interesting how those, the averages really mask that big difference between those two groups, so. But I'm glad that you find the data valuable. And I'm really, I think the biggest point to get people to participate is to know that they're, you're using those data to inform decisions that the district are making. And I think we just need to get that word out and help people understand that that's a tool for them to influence decision-making. And then I think earlier, when you were guys were developing the survey, I shared a paper or a project that somebody had written that talked about when they do their student surveys, they actually incorporated into the curriculum in a way that the students are understanding that this is about agency, about how to communicate their, you know, likes, dislikes about their school. And I think one, the woman who published the paper, it was like part of the civics class. That's where they took the survey, was like in the civics class because it sort of connected with the curriculum. So I think it's, it's a great opportunity. I'm glad to hear that you guys are going to continue it.
And I think, you know, we've talked broader of our kids' understanding sort of municipal government.
Right.
And to have something where, and you're all very busy, but if you were to have the five of you in an, you know, in an assembly where they talk and, you know, you present and then they ask you questions, similar to, you know, what is the Board of Selectmen doing? All of those things, we need to build up that piece.
You're kind of tying into what I wanted to share out from masks. So it's, it's very interesting that this conversation is happening because of what I went through at the workshop and what I learned from that workshop in terms of this very topic, so.
So we'll hold off on that, or do you want to?
No, I can wait till we get to it, but just put a pin in that, I guess. That thought is going to kind of come together with what we talked about.
Matt, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I mean, like, you know, it's just, definitely like, you know, hearing that you're going to take those results and, you know, address like, obviously, the students like not feeling safe or something like that. Like, you know, trying to, because like parents, like, we send our kids off, and it's like, okay, they're safe. I feel safe where they're going. But yeah, definitely that, like, you know, what does the child feel like, you know, environment? And like you said, there could be so many different things that cause that, and like what they're using as a barometer of safe, like, you know, may not be like physical safety. It may just be something else that, like, we're just not even catching, so, yeah.
And you're also that, I mean, this is the first year of it, but was someone thinking sort of physical harm or COVID?
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying. Like, there's so many different avenues.
A lot this year, so.
Yeah. No, that's all I had. Like, you know, it's nice to know that that's, you know, feeds into something that's, you know, valuable and changing, yeah.
And, I mean, I think it's, it's great that you continued it through COVID. I think a number of districts would have just said, oh, we'll just stop that for this year. But keeping that time series is, is really important, so I'm glad that you did it.
Thank you.
We'll always have that shared trauma of panorama. Oh, Ashley, thanks, yeah, that's like the reviews or whatever at our meeting this week. I said something about panorama. I'm like, wait, I don't use them anymore.
We'd like a little bit of.
I blame that guy from Farmington, Framingham?
No, Framingham.
Yeah. Yeah, I blame him because he sold it really well at a MASC meeting, and I was like, oh, okay. MASC meeting, excuse me. MASC meeting, not a MASC meeting, but. We, but yeah, he, he really sold it, and I, we kind of, I sort of sold Patty on it, and then it was a total disaster.
Well, we'd like a little bit more control over the survey, and you lose a lot with that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we can't do that.
Okay.
I am done with that, unless you have any questions on that topic.
Do you have anything more?
No. Thank you for the information.
All right. So we're going to piggyback, we're going to skip those next two things and, as discussed earlier, and move on to Dr. Parkinson.
Yes, so on page nine, you have a memo from me in regards to Dr. Gregory Parkinson being reappointed as our school physician. You know, luck of the lottery, he signed up right going into COVID without really realizing it, but he was really a godsend to us. So we are recommending a new contract for Dr. Parkinson from July 1 of 2022. And actually, in having a conversation with him, because of his future plans with retirement and everything, he, everything that I shared with him was good, except he really would like it to be a two-year contract. So it's, so that's the only change from what you have in this memo is that.
As long as he recommends someone to do.
I know. So we just need you to approve the two-year.
Okay. Well, you had me at hello on that one.
I know.
Any, any comments or questions on that?
Nope. Dr. Parkinson gave us very good advice and opinions throughout all of COVID, so I think we would be remiss not to renew his contract with us, so.
He really does have a great demeanor. He was a godsend during COVID, so.
So calm.
So I'm thrilled that he wants to stay on. So I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Dr. Gregory Parkinson for a two-year contract effective July 1 through June 30, 2024, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2024.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? Okay, Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
How about yes as well? Thank you. All right. Ashley, Mashpee Middle High School Stadium Project Update.
We had our weekly meeting today with Gail and our contractor, the neighbors at Greatville. We sedate all of the drainage that they had been installed at the track. The track meeting began this weekend, supposed to finish by the end of the week. After that's done, has to save the drainage, and we need to make some work on that. And then the concrete pad and storage building has been poured, and the base stone has been brought in for the drainage around the track field. So by the end of this week, we believe they'll be prepared to bring the truck in. However, they have to wait because there's been a delay on the synthetic surface actually coming in. So they're in constant contact with that manufacturer, and they keep us updated. To date, there's been a few delays on the project in terms of the lights in the building.
Can we talk about what's been on time?
No, we have all of our equipment in then, so all the remakes and things like that, all the drainage is in. So everything that they have to do kind of below the surface is going to be done on time, and they're making great progress. Both companies are agreed to work with. We have three change orders to be increasing the cost of the project, approximately $4,000. So we're still on target. We're below what we got to do to.
Great. So is Matt Traver planning contingencies for?
Well, all of the September games are away.
Oh, okay, so we did that. So there's no reason to believe we won't be done.
October.
And not this year, okay. Forgive me for asking, but since we're talking construction, want to fill me in on how the Quashnet gym is going? There's a lot of bleachers in the hallway and looks to be progressing. Is it?
Gosh, she's a good expert.
So they pulled out everything that was old there. They worked up the surface on the floor. And a couple of new backers needed to start, up the floors, put a new surface. There's one to be scoreboard, a couple of basketball nets backwards so they can be adjustable for the students. And also a new.
Curtain.
The curtain, thank you. And that's going to be all up and down, so we can go up and down, and there's more space on the future, so.
Oh, so it doesn't go like this anymore? It goes like this?
Yeah, you have to tie it back with a rope.
So it saves all of that space by bleachers.
Yeah.
Wow. Curious.
Yeah.
And then lovely logo, says Quashnet.
And his lovely logo says Quashnet School, that was government.
Yeah.
Of course.
The high school project's also underway in the gym. They have, they were up there today, and they said they're down the floor, so they can do that as well. They will also be putting up to a logo.
Yeah. And scoreboards. Yeah.
No, not here, sorry.
Yeah, okay. Cool.
That's great.
Excellent. Very exciting. Okay, so next we have the agenda for, well, we're just going to remind everybody about the school committee retreat on the 10th.
Yep.
Yes, and you do Rob O'Donnell, who is the DESI School Finance Director.
I think it's.
But he's Zooming now, right?
He does.
Oh, well, I know.
I can ask him again.
Yeah.
It's lovely on the Cape. What day is, what day of the week is that? On Wednesday?
Wednesday.
I'll ask him one more time.
Yeah, we'll give, we'll give him some good food.
What time?
To give him a place to stay on Tuesday night.
That's probably more what it is. That I can't do. No, we could find a place, but.
Yeah. Well, no, I wasn't suggesting you.
No.
But if we could cover, if I, you know, if we could cover his hotel or something, so he could come down to make his war.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, it's no big deal if he wants to be remote, it's just, it's a different experience.
Throughout the pandemic, we have very custom to do these meetings. Those of our DESI things and reports are done via Zoom. He does have a nice, powerful packet that he will have, and he'll provide to us ahead of time. So.
I mean, I guess if there's really not any reason, we need to know this person.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's not like we're connecting with some fellow school committee members from another district, or, you know, something like that. I doubt we'll have an ongoing relationship. So maybe I'll know.
Okay. I mean, he's been at the department for a while, and he is essential to everything I do, my daily job, and he's got all my master meetings. So he is a good person to know and reach out to, and he will always welcome that contact. But I will reach out to him if he's in person. If not, he's always available during Zoom, and he always gets on Zoom, like, within an hour's time, if you're pressed for it.
Okay. Are, do we have, we haven't marked up an agenda for that yet.
No, you and I can do that, but it will, sort of, there's that self-assessment that is in here. And then, by, at that point, we should have more firm-up sort of leadership goals, and the initiatives that we're going to work on from the strategic, from the plan for success. So I think some goal-setting on your end.
Yeah.
If you do.
And those, that self-evaluation, that's the same.
Yes, so you're going, that's this.
But it's been that way for?
It's been that way. So we have a chart that has like, all the different years. I took it off for this purpose, and you'll get it, so you can do it electronically?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I'll send that out, because the thing's on the 10th. I just don't want it coming in on like, the morning of the 10th or something.
No, well, obviously not the morning, because that's.
Friday, well.
What's the Friday before?
Yeah, Friday before, if you find out what's due.
So everybody gets theirs in by the 5th. That gives you next week from the following week.
So we'll get that out to you this week.
Okay. All right. So circling back, is everybody okay?
Almost 6:30.
We'll make it another eighteen minutes. You okay?
Yeah.
Everybody? Okay. All right. So we're just going to circle back on to, not you, I think I'm going to, like, leave you until the retreat. But, so the NSBA conference, that was just an FYI, but is there anything you want to say about that?
No, the NSBA conference?
Yeah.
No, just that we did submit for an opportunity to be a presenter for a session, and the presenters would be myself, Nicole, Kathy, and Consuelo, if we get approved. So that's been submitted. I forget when they let us know. But, but also, just for your general information, because you generally can go, so those are the dates.
Okay. And then, so now, back to the M A S C Summer Institute shareup.
Yeah. So I went this past Saturday to the Summer Institute. I only made it to the Saturday session, because I was busy Friday. But one of the sessions was about student representatives and school committees. And during that session, I learned that we really have a liaison, not a representative. There is, Superintendent DeBoer did bring up the Mass General Law that is about student representatives to school committees, and based on what's in here, and what we have, we're kind of at a disconnect. So this would kind of require that there is an election held at the high school in September to appoint a five-person, a five-student, or elect, rather, a five-student advisory committee. Within that committee, they then elect a representative who comes as a non-voting, but deliberate, like, they have a say, they're able to deliberate with us, they just are non-voting members of the school committee. That representative then, kind of, is that, there's still a liaison in a sense, but to your point about getting the information for, say, the surveys out, you know, one of the student reps, who was one of the presenters, was like, well, I have, we have a school Instagram account that I put out the information I learned from the school committee to the students. And so the students, it's like, they pass it on from student to student, whoever gets represented, like, elected as the representative to the school committee, gets the account to update it, to put the pertinent information that they might need to know. But then they also have meetings. The school committee is required to meet with them every other month. So we would need to, as a school committee, meet with this advisory committee of students, and, you know, have a meeting, a school committee meeting, with them. We can have a mentor from the school committee be with them as well. Not necessary, but encouraged. And then that student stays, they don't, you know, obviously, on the nights if they've got a lot of homework, or if they have a game, they can leave. But it's encouraged that they stay the entire meeting, because the goal is to help them learn more of the civics of school committee, help them understand more what we do, let them have a say in budgetary. Like, if they see something on the budget that they have a question about, it's their school as much as it's our, you know, like, it gives them a say, and it allows them to bring that student voice even more clearly to the table. But it was really an interesting session, because we had two school committees that, one that literally this past year just developed a student government by this one student. He was, he had just graduated, but it was a regional. Actually, I have my notes. But he, he had, he had to go out and just develop the whole student government formed as a whole, because they did not have this prior to him, excuse me, to him learning about this Mass General Law. And so, I did not write down what school he was from, I apologize. But he went out and he started it, and it was, he and another student alternated meetings. They allowed for two representatives on there, because it was a joint school district, so they had one from one school and one from the other. So that's why they alternated. But it really was interesting. The other girl, she was a sophomore, when she kind of got thrust into the role, she just signed up to be on student government, or got elected, rather, to student government, and they were like, the first person who was supposed to go to the school committee asked her, hey, I can't make it, can you go instead? Next month, same thing happens. After the fourth month of someone saying, I can't make it, can you go? The advisor to, the faculty advisor said, can you just do it full-time? And she also was a senior who recently graduated and had done three years as the student representative. The elections are supposed to be held every September. By October, you have the advisory committee. They can, they said that it can kind of work in conjunction with, like, your class officers, or if you have a student senate, or if you have, which I don't know that Mashpee, we don't have that, we mostly have the class officers, is my understanding. We do have, like, your student council. That could be a precursor, or could be elevated to something more of a student government, potentially. But it wasn't so much the popularity contest as more, it does allow the students who want to participate in something like governance to step forward as much, less so than, say, a popularity contest that sometimes those kinds of things can generate. I just, I found it to be very interesting, because a lot of the other districts that were at this workshop were like, well, we just have someone show up and tell us, well, the sports team won this game, and we got to dance on this night. I'm like, yeah, that's what ours does, which is great. And I love knowing what's going on in the schools. I think that can go one step further, personally. And I think that would really further our goal as a school committee to incorporate student voice much more clearly, because that is one of our goals, a school committee is to incorporate, we made that one of our goals. And I just felt that this was really an interesting step forward toward that, because it ties into some of that survey data of, they don't know what we do. You know, it gives them more of that civic-mindedness of, potentially, when they turn 18, who knows? Maybe they want to run for school. You never know what could come from it. So I just found it interesting, and that's why I kind of wanted to bring that up. And I will stop talking now, because I don't want to go on forever, because I could go on forever, but I really found, like, it to be very interesting. So that's what I learned on Saturday.
I'm so glad you went.
Yeah. No, it was, it was a good experience.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of useful professional development that they offer, so.
Yeah.
So I think that might, maybe we should add that to the agenda for the retreat. And yeah, my first question is, okay, so we have student government. Does this, is this student advisory committee called from that, like, an election of?
It can be solely just that five-student body. It does not need to be a bigger.
Yeah, like, so it can be standalone, because like, where we already have, like, a student council.
Yeah, and the way that the law is written, it just says right there, you know, with a student advisory committee to consist of five members, to be composed of students elected by the student body of the high school or high schools in each city, town, or regional school district. It doesn't necessarily need the student that presented, they just happen to also have a student senate. Like, I know when I went to Falmouth, like, we had student town hall, where we'd have, like, a, we'd have different representatives, and they'd actually do town hall every year. So like, that was our chance to have our own little town hall in high school, and tell our principal and school committee.
You mean like, town meeting?
Oh, sorry, that's what I meant, town meeting, yes.
But it is a representative town government.
And it, and that's how it was in high school. And like, you had to get elected as your, and they had so many per class, and, yes, it was, it was quite an experience. But it doesn't have to be that. It can be just the five students. It doesn't have to go that deep. If, if they want to, I mean, that'd be fantastic. I think that'd be great, but I don't know.
Would it be okay to ask, did you ask Stacy about what her experience was, her former district?
We did.
We did not.
Oh.
You talked about the student, right?
Yeah.
So he always had a student rep who sat at the table with a nameplate, and exactly how, I think you just described it, was not a voting member, but always participated, and was, like, that student representative was usually, was usually a senior, but always had a say when they discussed things, and at the end, when everybody had a piece, you know, like, a brief summary, they would always speak. But they were definitely an active member of the school.
Yeah. And one of them also, because one of the questions from the school committee members in the workshop were, you know, how did you differentiate between operational versus school committee purview? And that was something, one of the students was like, well, we meet with our principal once a month also. And they, you know, we would kind of bring our agenda for when we had, you know, like, if we knew something was coming up, we'd say, hey, is this you, or is this, and get that groundwork.
So the first school kind of mentors them a little bit.
At that particular school. At another school, it was a teacher. And then, one of the school committee members said she actually went to a lot of the meetings as well, because she had the time, and she helped mentor from a school committee. But the fact that they have to, per this, per the law here, somewhere it's written in here, that they do have to meet every other month with this advise, as a school committee with this advisory board.
Well, yeah, it would be really easy to add a liaison to that, like, we, add a school committee liaison position to that group, once it exists. But, no, thanks for bringing it to our attention. I think it, it, it does address some of our goals and some of the, you know, data that we're seeing. And that even just add running an election to something else, I guess, as well.
Plenty of people to.
Yeah, I was going to say, yes.
Add that to the leadership discussion this week.
And that's all.
Yeah. The other, the other little, I'll quickly mention, the other one I went to was the role of the chair, and we were highlighted as one of the exemplary agenda makers, the state. We got added into the packet. That I do have, if anyone wanted to see. But we were one of the sample packets, and everybody had to talk about what they.
Did you know we were going to?
I did not. So when Jim Hardy walked by, I went, we're represented. And he just kind of chuckled. But then I also got picked on a lot, because we're the only ones who put timestamps. So I had to explain our timestamps, and if we actually stick to them.
This is some of the ones with the landing acknowledgement?
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, people loved that. They loved the land acknowledgement. They loved that we had all of our goals, our, our mission and vision were very clearly stated. We got all kinds of gold stars on our agenda, so that was kind of a little.
Sherry and Abby at the school.
So congratulations to, to the agenda writers, because you made the packet for everybody to go.
So many others don't do any time references?
No. And, but what one does is they put links. Conker Carlisle puts links to the documents in their agenda. So if people go online, they can just click the link. I was like, that's pretty nice. Some of it also, the way we do warrants, it didn't really pertain to us, because that was the other big thing, like, the consent items.
Yeah, that was, I have to say, that was one of the, one of the things that was nagging at me about going to that. I really wanted to go to that session, but I just didn't want to.
Yeah. It was interesting. It was an interesting session. So.
It was in Marlboro, and you, I've just been, I've just had a lot of work all of a sudden, so.
I wanted to get my nerd on, I guess you could say, I don't know.
Time a little in the car. All right. Any other questions? The only other thing that I had to mention is, so we have our copy with the, the slot board chair and the town manager on Tuesday. So if there's anything you want us to raise or discuss.
Why we don't have any petition in our meetings?
Pardon me?
Why we don't have any petition in our meetings?
Yeah.
That's a good one.
And then, what was the other thing? Oh, and they did, I did see that they shared the recording of the meeting with the tribe, like, this is like, word mail with the tribe.
Did they?
Monday.
This will be.
Yeah, that's Monday.
So I haven't watched it yet. Does anybody?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't think I have anything else. Anybody else? Oh, it's so much shorter without Don here. Okay, can I admit that I just side-texted Dr. Furley to say, please tell Dr. Monet that this is not typical?
No.
Don't get excited.
Yeah.
It's July, and we have only, you know, three of our committee members. Anyway, all right. Well, in that case, I guarantee.